Little late starting, but I'm gonna call to order this regular meeting of the City of Atascadero Planning Commission on Tuesday, February 4th. And Vice Chair, Mr. Vanden Eykoff is going to do the Pledge of Allegiance for us.
Please stand and join with me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and our last roll call now.
Commissioner Anderson.
I'm here.
Commissioner Heath.
Here.
Commissioner Hughes.
Present.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Aki.
Commissioner Carranza.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Vanden Eykoff.
Here.
Chairperson Keen.
Here.
All present.
Okay, we'll move on to the approval of the agenda.
I'll move to approve.
I can second.
Vice Chairperson Vanden Eykoff.
Yes.
Commissioner Carranza.
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Hughes.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Chairperson Keen.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Okay, I will open public comment. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the commission on any matter not on this agenda and over which the commission has jurisdiction. Speakers are limited to three minutes. Please state your name for the record and come up to the podium if you'd like to make a comment. Okay, seeing none, I will close public comment and move on to the consent calendar.
I'll make a motion to on the consent agenda.
I'll go ahead and second that.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Carranza.
Yes.
Commissioner Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Hughes.
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Vanden Eykoff.
Yes.
Chairperson Keen.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Okay, we will move on to our Planning Commission business and the administration of Oaths of Office.
Thank you, Alyssa. Yeah, so. I'll let you, I'll let you take the lead on.
Me?
That next one. Well, I can do that if you'd like.
What? I don't know what.
Okay, I'll stay with.
I think the chair has some bloopers to share. No, just kidding.
Okay, I was not told that I needed a speech, but I'm ready anyway. Um, I want to say thank you to the three members of the Planning Commission who are leaving us tonight. I've been on the Planning Commission for, this will be my sixth year. Um, and this has absolutely been the best Planning Commission. A lot of different perspectives, a lot of differing opinions, and everything has always been dealt with with the most professionalism and respect for one another. And, um, you know, the new commissioners, y'all got big shoes to fill. Um, but I really have enjoyed the energy that we bring, the thoughtfulness, um, and just the camaraderie that we have as a planning commission. So all three of you will be very, very much missed. And, uh, come see us sometime. You know what the audience looks like. Just come cheer us on. So. Was that good, Phil? So did y'all give them an award or something? What'd you give them?
So the city council will be doing some recognition for the outgoing commissioners, um, at a future hearing.
Awesome. Um, okay, was there gonna be a, that was the presentation? And my amazing speech?
We actually have to do a roll call with everyone seated now.
Fabulous. Let's do a roll call.
Commissioner Anderson.
Here.
Commissioner Carranza.
Present.
Commissioner David. Commissioner Heath.
Present.
Commissioner O'Malley. Commissioner Panaccio. Chairperson Keen.
Here.
All present. Thank you.
Okay, so I think we need to elect, I'm sorry for the feedback, elect a chairperson and vice chairperson. So the way that's gonna work is somebody's gonna make a motion for who they want to be chair, and someone will second that, and then someone will make a motion for who they want to be vice chair, and someone will second that, and then we'll vote on those. So. Ready, set, go. You can't nominate yourself.
Yeah, you can. I, I would like to nominate Tori Keen for chair.
I can second that. Yes, I think overall, we've, we've had pretty smooth meetings. Uh, there's been some comedy and relief in between the seriousness and professionalism that I do appreciate. So, um, yeah, I'd like to second that.
Thank you. I accept the nomination.
Great, I'll do a roll call.
Great.
Commissioner Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Carranza.
Yes.
Commissioner David. Commissioner Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley. Commissioner Panaccio.
Yes.
Chairperson Keen.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
They like me. They really like me. Okay, um, Vice Chairperson.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Anderson.
I will second that.
Okay. Commissioner Heath.
Yes.
Chairperson Keen.
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Carranza.
Yes, I've really appreciated getting to know and work with Mr. Anderson.
Commissioner David. Commissioner O'Malley. Commissioner Panaccio.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Okay, so just a quick lesson on the microphones. So there's a button there, and when you push it and it's up, it's on, and then the microphone will pick up your voice. And that is how the audio goes through Zoom. And then when you're not speaking, you need to make sure you turn it off, which is you push the button again, and it's down. Uh, because the microphones are super sensitive and they'll get feedback. So that's how they work. Yeah. You're very welcome. Um, okay, so we have no public hearings. Um, any commissioner comments or reports? You do? Go ahead.
Uh, I was, uh, just going to add, uh, about the downtown murals. And I, um, take a, a close track of those and support those as a volunteer in the community. And there is a new development happening downtown where one of the murals at Brew was going to be potentially moved. And there was a big ker snuffle whether or not it was going to be with the new, uh, uh, residential and, and commercial down below. And it is going to be preserved, and I'm very excited about that. And so the more we can entertain that new development, but preserving some of those public art, the better. And so just thought I would add that. Um, I'd also love if we have, um, and if I may ask, um, any thing we'd like to hear from our new commissioners about, you know, just new business and, and things that they look forward to on the commission or, or questions we have for them. So.
Yeah.
Questions they have for us.
I was gonna see if the new commissioners wanted to say a little bit about you, if you're in that large position, or if you're appointed by someone. Of course, you don't have to say, you can say whatever you're comfortable with. Um, but just, you know, just a little bit about you and why, maybe why you want to be on the Planning Commission, or what, what brought you to the Planning Commission? Um, and I'm sorry, I don't know your name yet.
Maggie.
Okay, Maggie, you wanna go first?
Maggie O'Malley. I was appointed by Heather Newsom, and can you hear me now? Okay. Hello. I think, I, yeah, I have a, a quiet voice. I have to get back to that teacher voice. Um, so Maggie O'Malley, uh, grew up in the area, left for a few years and came back recently. I'm excited to get involved in the community again. I've done a few things, but currently I'm working as the athletic trainer at the high school, so I'm very involved in, in what's happening up there. Um, and we have a family history in town, and I'm excited to carry on that service. Thank you.
Well, welcome. Uh, next question.
Kathy David, and, um, I lived in Atascadero for thirty-five years. I am very excited about what I'm seeing in Atascadero and wanted to get involved. I am retired and, um, I bring a lot of, uh, experience from having worked, um, with the city of Paso Robles for, uh, many years, and I look forward to working with all of you and with the city staff.
And Eric, right? Okay.
Eric Panaccio. Um, I was appointed by Seth Peak. Uh, my wife and I moved our family here about three and a half years ago, and we've just grown to love the city. Um, I'm a business owner and architect, and, uh, thought this would be a great way to serve and give back to the community that we love.
Awesome. Thank you all very much. Anybody else? Is good?
I think everybody already knows me.
Well, yeah, maybe, maybe you can share something that you've learned about the commission. I, I feel like that was one thing that the old commissioners did during my first initiation meeting. That was helpful.
Yeah, we can talk too.
Or we could, we could just recap, because these new commissioners don't know us. I just thought about that.
You just say whatever you'd like to say, Jason.
Oh, you don't want me doing that? Um, well, I do wanna, I do wanna say that I'm really proud of what the commission has done over the time period that I've been on, and we've made some really big changes to this city that that are really changing the look and the feel, um, along El Camino and, and especially with downtown. And I'm just proud of that, and I think you guys should, you know, be proud of that, too. Um, it's coming along very well. Thank you, Phil, for, um, and, and the entire staff for everything that you guys have been doing to, uh, make sure that that moves along well. It looks like it's, it's on track, right? It's not falling behind. That's fantastic. You don't, you don't normally hear that. Usually it's like, well, it's, uh, behind again, so.
It's ahead, ahead of schedule.
Oh, you guys are awesome. You guys are awesome. And we got an awesome city here, awesome staff. And, uh, um, I've, I've been here for, um, going on thirty years now. Uh, I have a small business in Atascadero. It's an automotive repair business. I've been there twenty-five years and, uh, just love this city and love the, the people here. And just the feel of it. Raised two daughters. They're now in college, and I met my wife here, so, um, I'm not going anywhere. So I love being, I love being a part of this city, so thank you.
Commissioner Heath.
Yes, um, I've been a member of Atascadero pretty much most of my life. I was born and raised here, went to school here, graduated from high school here, uh, moved away for about twenty years, came back and was looking to get involved in my community and joined a couple different organizations and also, uh, got appointed to Planning Commission. And it's been an amazing experience to watch what actually happens in the city and how it happens. And the thought that goes into what happens in the city. And again, Phil and his staff do an amazing job. And I wanted to thank them for what, everything they've done to help us for the past few years at least. I think I've been on now two and a half years. So I'm looking forward to another great year.
You wanna go?
All right. Well, I'm Commissioner Victoria Carranza. Um, I've served for a couple terms now, got appointed, um, by the now mayor, Charles Borbo. And, uh, let's see here, I have a family of two young girls and, um, my husband, and we live, um, at our property that we own over by Hidden Springs. Um, I love to play in the creek most every chance I get. So, um, yeah, I come at this role with a background in city planning. However, I don't use that in my normal profession. I guess you could say I have for quite a while, though, because I, I sort of made a position. Um, I've worked with this nonprofit that I'm on the board of now for about fifteen years in environmental education, One Cool Earth, and, uh, we're pretty ingrained in Atascadero School District. Um, we're at every elementary school and have presence in the middle school and the high schools, if you include the continuation. So, yeah, um, just places to grow. I'm all about that and place making and serving families and youth. Um, and yeah, a lot of waste reduction and water. And so city planning kind of connects in some ways for me, but it's just an, a non-formal educator role. It's sometimes people don't piece that. Um, a lot of green building projects, and I worked with the city years ago when I saw this guy in the audience, um, doing garden type events through Atascadero as a volunteer. So, um, yeah, um, and now, uh, do birth work, actually. So I'm coming at you all as a, as a doula. Um, and yeah, grew up in the area on the south side, um, in Aurora Grande, so it's nice to have North County as home, and yep, that's where I'm at.
She helps me do breathing exercises when I get upset. Uh, my name is Tori Keen. I'm the chair. Um, I've been on the Planning Commission, like I said, for five years. Um, I was appointed by Susan Funk, and she keeps appointing me, so I must be doing okay. Um, I'm the, the comic relief. I like to, um, you know, have a well-placed joke every once in a while, just to relieve the tension, 'cause you know, we're, we're doing big things. We're doing big, important things, and, uh, you know, we should, we should be able to have fun when we're doing big things for the city that we love. So, um, I'm, I've also been a soccer coach. I was a soccer coach here for six years. Uh, I have two kids. Um, I, I don't know, I moved here about fifteen years ago now, and, uh, I think the moment I entered Atascadero, and I was like, yeah, this is home. And so, you know, I'm not going anywhere. It's great. It's great to be in Atascadero. It's great to be involved, and, and I love it. So that's, that's us. Director's report?
We do have a director's report for you tonight, and, uh, since we don't have any other items on the agenda, I wanted to give you an update on what staff's been working on, what we're gonna be working on, what we're gonna be bringing to you. Um, what I wanted to do originally was have a training session for you guys tonight and talk about just some basic stuff and, and Brown Act and all those kinds of things. We're still gonna do that. We're not gonna do that tonight. Um, we're trying to line up, um, some training materials, and our city attorney wants to really be involved in addition to, um, you know, getting some background stuff. So we're, and we're thinking it needs to be on a night that's not a typical Planning Commission night, so we're looking at a, a Wednesday or a Thursday. Um, and so maybe before the night's out, we can take a Strabo and see what night might work best and what month, what week might work best. Also, you can communicate back to me and Kelly on that, but think ahead. Think about a Wednesday or Thursday evening, probably be just like an hour. Doesn't have to be six PM. It could be a different time. It could be four PM. It could be five PM. It could be seven PM. Could be, you know. So it, it basically be a special, it would be a special meeting. Um, I'm sure Taylor would love to be here as well, but I think Dave, Dave wanted to be here. He mentioned that specifically. So, uh, we'll plan that, so keep that in mind. Uh, I wanted to give you an update on the projects we're working on. I think I, I met with, uh, three new commissioners, and we kind of gave them some general background. And, um, what I mentioned to them, and I'll mention to the rest of you as well, is, you know, our staff, we're here, we, we're always happy to give you a tour of the city and to take you to some of these development sites and talk about the general plan update as well. If you want to do that, you can always schedule a coffee with us or a quick drive about, and we can do that as well. But, um, let me take you through a few images.
Can I just interrupt one second?
Oh, you can, sure.
I just want to encourage the new commissioners, uh, use the planning staff. If there's an item coming up on the agenda and you have questions, reach out to them and have a meeting with them. They're super helpful. They're always available. Um, if you're meeting with Phil, bring him a cup of coffee. He'll talk all day. So, but I really encourage you to develop a relationship with them, get to know them, uh, use them, because not all of us have planning, city planning backgrounds, and not all of us know all those things, and they do. So use them. They're there for you, for us.
Thank you. Thank you for that, Tori. Um, so I'll, I'll see what, um, is on this little presentation. I'm not sure Kelly put this together this afternoon and, and I haven't seen it yet, but we'll. Oh, Eric, maybe, and Sam, thank you guys for putting some images up here. So first thing I want to chat about, so general plan update, where I would say seventy-five percent done with it. We've been working on it for two years now. Uh, we've had a number of outreach workshops. We've now got, uh, a plan, basically a map that's been endorsed by the city council that shows where all the land uses will be in the city. Not a whole lot of change from our existing map. And now we're working on the policy work. We're ironing out the policies that will continue to sort of form the city throughout the future. This little, it's hard to see, but this little schematic up there shows you we're in the final stages, and we have a consultant that's helping us, MIG out of Pasadena. They're helping us write the policies, and they're also helping us write the environmental impact report. One of the things, one of the big tasks when you update the general plan, you also have to create a whole environmental impact report, because every change you make in policy and every change you make on the map has implications and, and CEQA requires that you address all those changes through the California Environmental Quality Act. So we're doing that part of it. We're doing the policy part of it. Pretty soon, we're gonna bring some pieces of that to the Planning Commission. We're just getting ready also to schedule a time to go back out to the public and show them the work we've done. Show them some of the policy framework that we've done, um, and then go through an adoption process, which will include the Planning Commission and the city council. Um, and we want to be done this year. We want to have an approved map document, um, and EIR certification done this year. Uh, it's normally a two to three-year process. We're in, when did we start this whole process, Kelly? I don't know. It's been a while.
A while ago.
Yeah, a while ago, but we've gone through a change of city manager. We've gone through change of city council. Uh, we've gone through a few wildfires recently that were really close to our consultant's office, so we, we're close for a bit, so we're, we're, we're moving along. This slide's really good. If you can see it, it really kind of outlines what we call the big moves. These are the big components. Um, which, what does the first one say? A mix of housing types? It's hard to see that little.
Yes, create a mix of housing types. It's a little cut off on the screen.
Yeah.
Instead of playing with Zoom, I think we'll just go with it.
And the reality is, I'm gonna expand on that. Really what is happening in our city today is different than what we saw twenty-five years ago when we first made our general plan. There's a lot more mixed use. There's more density. There's more height. We're looking inward at the city to try and create places where we didn't have places. And when I say places, I mean places where people want to walk around, where you want to shop, where you might want to work, where you live, and all those things together. So every new project that we're seeing in the city kind of mobilizes and capitalizes on that. For example, even the Valley Fresh, uh, market supermarket center that's up there at Del Rio that's being developed, it's gonna share its site with housing. It's gonna share its site with rolled-up door spaces that have light manufacturing. It's gonna share its site with restaurants. And that's not, that's something you see today. When you go to the Bond Shopping Center, it's a strip mall. That style of planning is, is long ago, and it's a new trend now, and it's a mixture of these uses together. Um, and we're just trying to complete the whole city so that we have everything here, attracting new industries and higher-wage jobs, um, improving mobility, access and safety. In fact, our team was working a lot on that today, um, uh, when a couple of the commissioners might have come in and seen us working on those policy frameworks for mobility, along with our public works team, and, you know, how the new, uh, policies for streets and connections will out, will, will lay out in the general plan. Um, and then, you know, it's also a lot about financing. So when we say, as item D says, they're addressed public infrastructure needs, that really is what that's saying. In addition to outlining what those needs are, outlining how we're going to pay for those things with the economy that we have in our community. Um, so that's a big piece of it, which leads me to the last one, which is fiscal sustainability, so we can continue to be a city, a rich city, and continue to move forward. Uh, we do have a project website. I do encourage you to check this out. Hopefully we keep it up to date. Our consultant helps us with this. Uh, this is in addition to the city's website. This is off to the side. It's Atascadero twenty forty-five. And this is where we post updates and what we're working on with the general plan update. Um, and it's a big project, and it's been a lot of fun and still moving on. So some of the bigger development projects that we're working on right now, um, I'd just like to outline some of these. I was starting in the downtown. This is the trend of mixed use. Again, this La Moda project, um, right just north of Traffic Way on a vacant lot there, I think, uh, Commissioner Carranza was just speaking about the public art that's now against the wall, that's gonna face a corridor, and you'll still see the art, but it'll be in between the buildings where a walking corridor is there. But this is a new trend, but this building actually mimics a building that was there. It used to be the La Moda Theater. And now this is gonna get rebuilt in the image of that La Moda Theater and become a mixed-use project with apartments upstairs, restaurant space downstairs, and a beautiful addition to the downtown and perfect complement to what's happening in the downtown with all the parking in the center and the trees and the lights. Um, this kind of, uh, business activity is what we're really trying to attract downtown. So it's a good example of that. And we've actually got several other projects like this in the works as well. Let's go to the next slide. So way down at the south end of the city, about twenty years ago, was it that long ago? Maybe fifteen years ago, there was the Dove Creek Project. And it was supposed to start with this commercial component, that's five-acre property at the corner, and then the housing was supposed to get built. It didn't happen that way. For whatever reason, the housing got built first, and then this lot remained vacant for many, 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 many years. But this is supposed to be the neighborhood commercial hub that the folks can walk to, to go and get a beer, a quart of milk, and a hot dog. Well, anything similar to that. So now this is finally developing. It's gonna include some housing. It's gonna be mixed use again. Um, but also be that neighborhood spot. So this is really cool. Another mixed-use project, um, Barrel Creek. This is way back in the north end of town. This is on the west side of Highway one oh one at Del Rio. And this one, again, is gonna be a mixture of uses. There's not only residential, there's a hotel, there's light manufacturing, roll-up door spaces, and I think what they're trying to do here is create another Tin City where Barrel House is in Paso, this kind of a, a vibe over there. So this is actually in for construction permits now, uh, for the public improvements phase. And we hope to see this under construction very soon. Neat project. This one already went through all of its approvals. And going, jumping across the freeway, this one's already under construction, but it's gonna be in multiple phases. The, the, uh, Valley Fresh Market is already under construction. There's a distillery and restaurant space right next to it that's under construction. We've issued, um, permits for other stuff, and it's under review for other stuff on his site, but there's also. but there's also a lot of other development that will happen in the near future on this site that does include the mixed use, like I was mentioning earlier, the apartments above some commercial spaces, and some retail, and some restaurant spaces. This is a neat one, this one's gonna be a really nice design, and really serve that whole north end of town, so we're really looking forward to it. And then nearby, just to the south of this.
Sorry to interrupt again, but I have a quick question.
Sure.
About Valley Fresh, when are we getting our traffic light back?
Oh, traffic, that is the number one question we get about, is traffic and roads, and when are we getting that back?
The traffic light at Del Rio.
Kelly is itching to tell you about it, she's, she's our traffic engineer planner, she's our transportation planner.
People don't understand what a blinking red light means, and it's frustrating, so I would like to know when we get a traffic light back.
There, there is a technical piece of making those lights work with the new turn lanes, and there's sort of the permissive left-hand turn with the, where it blinks yellow for the, for the turn signal. There's a key piece of technology that's needed to make that work and do all of the timing, and it is still on back order. But we do believe it will be here soon.
Who do I need to call?
Ghostbusters.
Okay, that's awful.
Yeah, it has been ordered, it's been ordered for a while, we're just waiting for that piece of technology to come in, and then we can get them working again.
It's coming, it's very soon, my apologies on the traffic.
Okay, I mean, otherwise we could do just a real quick, like, training video that you could post on Facebook about what to do at a blinking red light. It does not mean stop for fifteen minutes, and it also doesn't mean go before everybody else.
It's a good time to check your email.
Yeah.
No.
Sorry, I'm done, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. What's the next one? Oh, yeah, I was talking about the Edge, this is a vacant property just south of what used to be the factory outlets, is a vacant property there. This is gonna be developing with two buildings, or actually gonna be, this is the first rendition, but it's now being changed to a four-story, two-building development that, again, makes use above commercial. Really neat, neat project, so this is the, again, following that trend. Across the street from this location, go back, go ahead, next slide. Del Rio Marketplace, there we go, all right, sorry. This one is really exciting, this used to be the Walmart site. I don't think the Walmart was a great fit for this property, just because of topography. But finally, a property owner found the right fit for this property because of its topography, because of its location. And it's the first of its kind in Atascadero, a big RV resort that will have the ability to take RVs that are traveling through the area, in addition to having permanent RVs parked on the site that you can stay in, in addition to some lodging units, and some other great amenities on the site, and a couple of buildings there. So really looking forward to this one, called Del Rio Ranch RV Resort. This got approved by city council about a week ago, two weeks ago? And it will be, it came, already came through planning commission, and this one is gonna be going into construction soon. So really, another massive site, massive project. And that's it, and there's a few other projects in town that are mixed use, and there's a few other little commercial ones. And I'm always here to answer your questions about what our team's working on and what's happening. We're also working on a number of, in addition to the general plan, we're always working on policy, things that we're gonna be bringing you, because the state, every five minutes, is implementing a new housing policy or a new mandate that we have to run through. So I know there's some more of those in the pipeline that are gonna be associated with SB nine and our ADUs, and some of our other stuff that we've gotta, we've gotta update. But the big thing is, the policy thing is gonna be the general plan and the zoning, you're gonna see that this year. And especially the zoning, and that's gonna be a lot of work, I think it's gonna take more than one or two sessions to get through all of that.
All I ask is snacks and Coke Zero.
Yes, yes.
And I'll be here as long as you want me. Thank you for that, because, you know, we always get asked about stuff, and now I can tell people stuff. So, does anybody have anything else?
Could I just chime in really quick, just want to introduce myself, I'm Taylor Fulland, I'll be the Assistant City Attorney, it's all right, at the planning commission meeting, so I'll be here to answer any legal questions that come up, just generally make sure we're conducting business in accordance with applicable laws, one of which is the Brown Act. If you aren't familiar, it's the state's open meeting laws. So, like Phil said, we'll be scheduling a training where we're gonna go into depth on the Brown Act and some conflict of interest laws that apply to you as commissioners. At that time, you'll be able to answer any questions that come up with what we're presenting on. In the meantime, we're gonna send around a twenty twenty-five Brown Act handbook in the coming days to you all. So this is just gonna overview of the Brown Act. You'll see, it's about eighty pages, don't worry, the like latter forty of them are just the act printed out. So really focused on those first kind of twenty pages, it's a great resource for you guys if you have any basic questions about the Brown Act. But as always, if you have any kind of Brown Act or conflict of interest questions, please feel free to reach out to me, or Phil, or Kelly, so we can kind of appropriately advise you on how to deal with that. So, nice to meet you all, and looking forward to work with you.
Okay, I'm gonna adjourn this meeting, our next regular meeting will be on February eighteenth? Confirm? Oh.
Sorry, one more question, chair. And maybe it can just be a poll vote, I'm wondering if commissioners are ready to maybe think about a date for that training, or whether you'd just like to communicate by email, and take a look at your personal lives and come back to us on that.
I think perhaps communication by email might be best.
Okay.
Since we were not ready to consult the calendar.
I just sprung it on you.
You did, so I think an email will be best, so that means we all, including me, should check your city email often. Not every two weeks, right, the day before the meeting?
Please do, I think we'll just email you individually is what we'll do.
Okay.
So.
Perfect.
We'll figure it out.
Okay.
We'll propose some dates, and maybe we'll do like a survey thing. Yeah.
Whatever you want to do.
Yeah. Thank you.
Can I adjourn it now, 'cause I really like hitting the bell?
You, you can.
All right.
You're the chair, you got it.
February eighteenth, we're meeting February eighteenth?
Or do we have items for that agenda? Yes, it sounds like we have one. Oh, we may have an item for you, yes, so just, just for now, yes.
So maybe the eighteenth, whatever, it's scheduled for the eighteenth, so we'll see you here on the eighteenth of February twenty twenty-five, and I adjourn this meeting.